All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board number four. This is our June meeting. The time now is 6:30 PM. Welcome everyone. So I'm going to ask our neighborhood assistant Brandon to take the role, please.
Okay, I'll be taking roll call. Cameras on if possible for the roll call. I'll begin with Chair Brian Kang.
Present.
Present. Board member James Logue. Absent. Board member Travis Saito.
Present.
Present. Board member Judy Ann Smith Kauhane. Absent. Board member Kelsey Aguillera.
Present.
Present, thank you. Board member Woody Salley. Absent. Board member Becky Gardner.
I'm here.
Oh, here? I heard someone here.
Here, present.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you Becky. Becky. Board member Joyce Murakami. Absent. Board member Audrey Abe. Present. Good evening. Board member Paul Ho. Here. Board member Franklin Chung. We have Coro.
Okay, thank you very much Brandon, appreciate it. So we were go to the first item on our agenda, City and State Monthly Reports. First off, the Honolulu Fire Department. Yeah.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being present tonight. We have a little mechanical issue with one of our trucks. My name is firefighter Betelli from the Kamaki Fire Stations. For you tonight, I have the monthly stats for the month of May as well as fire safety tip announcement. Regarding the incident statistics for the month of May, we had one activity along fifty-three medical, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, and five vehicle crash or collision. And our fire safety tip announcement, the HFD is excited to announce the launch of two new public data tools on our website. The Incident Trend Dashboard, which will allow the residents to easily access five years of emergency data by neighborhood. And Fire Response Search Tool, which is a tool in place to allow individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidents in which they've been involved, affected by, or should have interest in. You'll be able to get these tools on our website. fire.honolulu.gov slash news dash end dash info slash. And if you have more questions, you can direct them to Public Information Officer. And the phone number is eight zero eight seven two three seven zero eight zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the Honolulu Fire Department from the board? Any comments or questions for the public? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Yeah, my bad.
All right, next up, we have our monthly report from the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. The stats from May, we have seven motor vehicle thefts with ten the previous month. Eleven burglaries with four the previous month. Seventeen thefts with twenty-seven the previous month. Ten unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases with eight in the previous month. Our total calls for the service for the month of May is five thousand eight hundred and ninety-two. Security tip for the month is home security tips. And I'll go over some of them that I highlighted. Always lock all exterior doors and windows before leaving your house, even if it's for a short trip. Make your home look occupied by leaving on lights and radios and make it difficult to break in. Always lock your garage doors and sheds and don't tempt a thief by storing valuables or things that they might want to take in sight. Louvered windows are intended for ventilation. It's most common way burglars make entry to homes in Hawaii is removing of these louvers. Glue the louvers or purchase locking clips to increase the security. Consider installing an alarm system. Former Neighborhood Security Watch, we can help you with your neighborhoods, neighbors to improve security and reduce risk of burglaries and other crimes. And when you're at home, don't open your doors to strangers, unexpected repair people or deliveries. Never allow a stranger into your home, even if for an emergency. Don't give personal financial information over the phone. And if your home is broken into, do not enter. The perpetrator may still be inside. Use a cellphone or a neighbor's phone to call the police. Write down license plate suspicious vehicles when you get home. If you encounter or see someone who had broken into your neighbor's home, do not attempt to apprehend them, call the police with the description of the suspect and the direction they were last seen. And you can find more tips regarding this on our website, honolupd.org. If there's any question, I'll be happy to take them at this time.
All right, thank you very much Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department from the board? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Yes, sir. Can you come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Nick Caswanto. I live in Kamaki and I'm sorry if this is an old issue, but it's my first meeting. But I've noticed there's been drag racing on Wai'au Avenue late at night, and I don't know if that issue has been resolved, but I hear it. You know, plenty of nights and I don't know what measures can be done for that or if this is the right form for it. But you know, if the police can do something about that, that would be great.
Yeah, we're aware that drag racing, most of the time the complaints are on the freeway, but I'll direct the people in the Wai'au area to make checks at night.
Okay, thank you. Is there a particular time that you're hearing these?
Uh, maybe like midnight, you know, a little around midnight, past midnight.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, thank you Lieutenant. Any other questions or comments for the Police Department? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much Lieutenant, appreciate the update. Okay, so we're going to move on to the Board of Water Supply. Is Lorna Heller on? Okay, yep. Okay, so no report from the Board of Water Supply this month. All right, so we're going to move on. If there are no objections, I am going to take an item out of order on the agenda. And that item is the Certificates of Accomplishment to the Valedictorians of the Area High Schools. We'd like to honor the valedictorians of Kamaki Christian School and Sacred Hearts Academy on behalf of the community with a a brief ceremony, so I will turn it over to our Vice Chair Paul Ho.
Thank you, Brian. Well firstly, we want to congratulate both of you guys in your great accomplishment. It's a big milestone in your lives, so thank you very much. So we wanted, as the Neighborhood Board, to acknowledge the effort that went into that. Again, big accomplishment. Also want to thank mom and dad and family members because you guys are all part of this effort. So if we can have you come up for a time. On behalf of Kamaki Neighborhood Board, congratulations. And Janelle. Congratulations. Thank you again both for appreciate you coming on tonight.
All right, congratulations again to both of you. All right, so we're going to move on to public input and then community updates. And just to give folks notice, I am, unless there are any objections, I'm going to move, after public input and community updates, I'm going to move another item up in the agenda. And that is the thirty-six fifteen Sierra Drive property status. So first off, we will go though to public input. So is there any public input this evening from the public? And this is an opportunity for the public to give some input. No board action may be taken on this portion of the meeting, but we'd be glad to receive any public input, questions, or comments. Sir Doug, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone and identifying yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas Kilpatrick. Sixty-year resident of the area. My question is informational. Our area is, there's many, many old houses that are being sold. People are moving out and the new owners I've seen in the last ten years. I've seen grading go on without, I would think, without a permit, I'm just guessing. But what happens, and in some of these circumstances, the grading goes on and then a couple of years later, new homes are built. And the new homes are built on a flat platform that take full advantage of the twenty-five foot height limit, which is not allowed under code if you are, if you have to follow the contour of your lot. Now, I'm not by nature a whistleblower, but I am a guy that has properties below me where if they take advantage of this, we're going to lose our view. So my question is, what is the proper procedure? Am I supposed to go around and film grade of property that's being going to be built in two years? Is that my job? I don't want to do that. But how do I make sure that the Department of Planning is actually using genuine or accepting genuine elevations on the lots when they're turned in for building permits? So this is an informational question, but I'd like to know what, if anything, the public, are we even allowed to be involved? And if we do make a, I mean, I don't want to go around and film every lot on the hill, but thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir, for your comments. I know we have a couple of representatives from the city this evening, so hopefully they might be able to respond to that. All right, any other public input this evening? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, Director.
Thank you. My name is Donna Puna. I'm the Director of the Department of Planning and Permitting, so I appreciate your question, a very good question. We are complaint-based, so if you have a suspected property where you think the grading is not proper, you can call our office or report online on our website. And we will send out inspectors and they will take a look. And we will take any information that you have to determine if there's improper or unpermitted grading or yeah, we will definitely check out whatever information you have. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, other public input?
Hi, I'm Juanita Liu. And last meeting, there was some mention about allowing more dogs in parks. And I know the Neighborhood Boards, each one received a letter, by which I have to commend DPR for asking us prior to doing something like that. But anyway, in looking at the situation, three of us, Lealani, Iwaki, Audrey Abe, and myself, decided to look into the matter because in the letter was, we were provided a list of a few parks that do allow dogs and a few that don't. And many more that don't. Also, the request was made as an issue of fairness stating that on Oahu, there are three hundred and eight state parks and only thirty-six do allow dogs. So in looking at the situation, we kind of decided to take a more generalized approach because our neighborhoods are so close to each other. Kamaki, Kahala, Waikiki, that we really can't just look at our situation as an isolated area. So we decided to look at all of the parks on East Oahu. And for that, we have a list of thirty-two parks. So how many of these allow dogs? Is it only twelve percent? As is cited by DPR? Well, the answer is twenty-seven of these thirty-two parks allow dogs in our neighborhood. Okay, and the five parks that do not allow dogs are community parks, specifically those that are heavily used for recreation for, by children. If your kid was in a sports team, like mine was in soccer, you know the difficulty of getting time on the courts, in fact, on the parks. In fact, what happened when my children were in soccer, they decided to go statewide. So we had to, as parents, drive all the way to, you know, the Kapolei and so forth, instead of just playing in the neighborhood parks. So that's how much of a problem that was. So these parks are Kilawea District Park and the rest are community parks, Petri, Kamaki, Kapalona, and Manalani. And so what we looked at was, because of the high demand for the use of these parks by kids, and and we also looked at the hazards, you know, what are the the problems about having dogs in parks? And there are numerous. Not only are there health and also safety dangers to people, but also risk to other dogs. And also environmental considerations such as the the waste left, even though you clean up, there's no way you can completely clean that. And so there's disease transmission and all of those dangers. And all of that is listed in a report that we did submit to the board, and by the way, also to the Diamond Head Board. So what they did was they're forming a committee to really look into this, to come up with a recommendation. And what we want to have done is as a community to come together, all together, to come together with a very reasonable approach. So what we are recommending is to have these five parks reserved for the children and the family use and to keep these parks as dog-free parks. And the second recommendation is that we, and they cite ten off-leash parks. In East Oahu, there are five off-leash parks. And what we're recommending that if there's any opportunity or space to provide more off-leash parks for dogs. And the real expert here is Audrey. I'm going to be very brief because she lives, she not only is a dog owner and lives across from Kapalona Park, but you know, she's had incidents like a dog attack as well. And so I'm going to be very brief. Those are basically the two recommendations we are making. Thank you. The Old Stadium Park, Audrey?
Sure. You know, online, it shows that they allow dogs there. And also the other park across the street there, the Moili, it has a baseball field. So we checked online, but I'm not sure if the city has, you know, contrary information, but we can just go by what we find online. Just as a follow-up, I do live across Kapalona Park and my daughter was involved in sports too. And there's really limited amount of space for practice. I don't know, parents who have kids, you know, for basketball, soccer, baseball. And Kapalona has five and a half acres and there's three baseball fields. Basketball, tennis, swimming pool, and a rec center and a jungle gym. So it's very limited space and I've seen dogs interfere with games. And even when I took my grandson there, he's six, and I was kind of looking out for dogs too, you know, as they run around. So it's always that fear because it's not uncommon that there's dog fights. And people bring their dogs from other neighborhoods too, so. And the parks are well-used. You know, I talked to the parents, they come from Winward and even Kapolei and Wainoa to play sports in town. Maybe their work in town is more convenient, so it's heavily used and just kind of feels, just that it'd be good to preserve the sports team parks for the children especially. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I don't live on Willamette or I saw Manalani Circle, but I walk up there a lot for exercise. And I assure you, even though there's no dogs allowed up in Manalani Circle, I mean, the grassy area right next to the basketball courts and the tennis courts. From what I've seen the last five years, it's pretty much only used by dog owners and their dogs. I really don't see anybody else using that grassy area and everybody seems to be okay with that.
All right, Juanita, do you mind just stating your name just for the minute?
Oh, Juanita Liu.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to all of you for that research and report.
I'm sorry, Brian, could I just?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
What the five parks were again? Just what the five parks were that she recommended as for reserve for children? I didn't catch all of them.
Yeah, Juanita, do you mind repeating those five parts?
Okay. Kilawea, Kilawea District Park, Petri Community Park, Kamaki Community Park, Kapalona Community Park, and Manalani Community Park. And we have a report that lists all of those parts. It's not a complete list either. It's whatever we could find.
Great, thanks Juanita. Yeah, and Becky, that?
Thank you, yeah.
That letter is also in our Google Drive, so the report's there too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir. If you don't mind coming up to the microphone and identifying yourself, please.
Aloha, my name is Bill Lane. I've been a resident of Kamaki since nineteen ninety-seven. And I've seen that short period of time, quite a bit of change from the classic Hawaiian standard homes to overdevelopment of some of the quote-unquote monster homes. Now, I understand that there's a need for housing, but at the same time, displacement of the current residents by these monster homes, especially one good example being the thirty-six fifteen Sierra Drive one. That's been a blight on the neighborhood for a while now. Yet I see nothing being done, either resolution of that, our triple homes being, coming into code or them completing the job in what way, whatever way it should be. My thoughts are that this type of housing should never have been permitted in the first place. And that the fact that it is needs to be solved one way or the other so that the rest of us will know what we're going to face going forward. If every old home is going to be torn down and turned into an apartment complex, this is something that we need to be aware of beforehand so that our progeny and children are not faced with living in an apartment zone, but living in what is classically Kamaki.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. All right, any other public comment this evening? All right, so my understanding is that the Board of Water Supply, Lorna, is now online. Lorna, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, so we can hear you. So we'll go back up to the Board of Water Supply report.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize for being late. I had some technical issues trying to log on. I do have a quick announcement. There were no main breaks to report for the last month. This month, I have a report on the water quality report. Just letting you folks know that each year, the Board of Water Supply mails customers an annual report on the quality and contents of our drinking water. And effective July first of this year, the Board of Water Supply will be providing this report on a bi-annual basis issued in July and December of each year. The report is going to also be available online at wwwboardofwatersupply.com. And if you need more information and you want to request a translated copy, call the Board of Water Supply Communications Office at eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. And that is the report I have for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, thanks very much, Lorna. Question, comment? Yes, ma'am.
John Smith, and last month I talked to you about what I felt was unfair sewer costs or charges. And you were going to look into that and get back this month?
Actually, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry, Lorna, to interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we had asked maybe if the city's representative could get back to you. And I know Brian's here this evening. I'm not sure if he was able to follow up on that.
Okay.
Because my understanding that that issue is more related to, I guess, the sewer side versus the water side. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, Harold, go ahead. Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean typically, yeah, we, I don't know if this projector's a little weaker maybe. Would you like us to try to turn off that light in the front? Yeah, we, it gets really dark, so. Any other questions or comments for the Board of Water Supply? Okay, seeing none, thanks very much, Lorna.
Thank you. Apologies for being late again. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, so we will move on to community updates. Kamaki Business and Professional Association, so I was contacted by KPPA. They have no further updates this month and they will attend the board as needed if there are any future updates or information to report. Okay, so if, again, if there are no objections, I am going to move up the thirty-six fifteen Sierra Drive property status agenda item next. We do have Director Apuna here this evening. Thank you very much for joining us. We really appreciate your time.
Sure.
And if you don't mind giving an update on that property.
Sure, absolutely. And I appreciate your concern and your questions on that property. So I'll give a little bit of background about that property. So they came in for a permit and then it was approved. And then they started to construct. There's a lot of other issues, but they started to construct. We were concerned about the construction and we looked at the plans. And what they did was, what we approved was based on incorrect information. They put square footage and other things that they, that we reviewed. And I know the code was correct, but it was false as far as what was actually the project. So we approved it, but based on false information that they supplied on the project. So then we revoked the permit. And when we revoked it, they were, have the ability to appeal that revocation. So they appealed it at the Building Board of Appeals, and that's an administrative body. It's under DPP but separate from, from, from the director. So that went through the Building Board of Appeals. There was a hearing. I was part of that. I testified that the revocation was appropriate and we prevailed. There were major issues with how they counted floor area. So when it comes to monster homes, it's all based on floor area ratio. And that's the ratio between the floor area, floor area, total floor area of the structure against the area of the lot. And so you're supposed to be, if it's point-six floor air, floor area ratio, then you're required to you're required to design according to certain standards. If it's from point-six to less than point-seven, then there's more standards or different standards involved and you can't be over point-seven, right? So that's a density issue. So in any case, they were above point-six. And so with point-six, they're supposed to bring in, the side yards are supposed to be a lot wider. They're supposed to come in because your mass is bigger, so let's make sure there's more space with, between your neighbors. So then, once they lost at the Building Board of Appeals and the department prevailed, the permit was revoked and they had to start all over again. So they have to submit a new building permit application in order to comply. And so right now, that building permit application has been under review. I think they submitted, so I'm trying to remember my dates, but I believe I think they submitted, so I'm trying to remember my dates, but I believe that the BBT, the Building Board of Appeal happened in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and then shortly after that, they submitted for a new building permit. So this new building permit, they obviously need to comply with the law, and they can't give us false information like they did last time. The building permit process, which I think a lot of people don't understand, they just think it's stuck with DPP, but that's not the case. It's a back and forth. We review the plans. We put comments saying this is not to code. You need to change this or that. We give it back to the applicant. It needs to go to other, maybe Board of Water Supply, other agencies. And then, so then the design professional needs to address all those comments, fix it, come to code. They re-submit it to DPP. We check. But a lot of times, there's this cycling, like they still don't have it right, and we got to give it back. So I think it's about two to three on average cycles. That's why it takes a while because, you know, sometimes they don't address the comments. They don't understand how to address the comments. But in any case, this is, so it's been in process for a while. I apologize. I don't have the start date of this building permit application. But it's nearing its end with the residential review. It still requires, I think, stormwater quality approval. And then there was something with an easement, so something in our psych development. So, but it's nearing its end. I looked at it recently, or actually today, I was looking at the plans and what they did. And this is something that is, I'm going to talk to Chair Tommy Waters about because we're just working within our codes. You know, we're within the laws that we have to execute. We have to review for. We have to find compliance. But sometimes, I think there's some loopholes. So what they did was they brought their floor area ratio down. They brought down the floor area by taking these two areas that they said were dirt before. And they took it out of the floor area and made it an extension of their garages to garages. So it's like a tandem parking. So they basically created a garage. It was two cars. Now it houses three. And when the area is for a garage, it doesn't count as part of the floor area. So this is kind of a not good because my problem with that is they could later build it that way, and then they could put up a wall, make it a room, you know. And so that's what we don't want. So I'm going to talk to Tommy about that. I mean, I think there's some ideas we could do, like if you're going to have more than two cars fitting, anything beyond that for a car should count towards the floor area, floor area ratio. Anyways, those are some ideas, but I think what the developer is trying to do is they're stuck with the structures. We've all seen them, like, I don't know, maybe seventy-five percent more or so built up. They don't want to shave off parts because that's going to be very expensive for them. But they came up with this idea that they're just going to make these garages bigger. So if that is the final approval, what we have, what DPP can do is that we can issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. Usually you get an official certificate of occupancy at a certain point. But this would be temporary for at least two years so that we could still come in and with reasonable notice, do an inspection and make sure, wait, did they close off that part of the garage? Did they convert it into more living space? So that's what we will do in this case because I do not trust this developer, obviously, with all the shenanigans that they've done. So that's where we are. The approvals should be coming soon, but we're looking at things like this. When I looked at the plans today, I noticed a hallway that's going towards nowhere, basically going towards that extended garage. And I'm like, hey, that doesn't make sense. Make it a room because I know what you're going to do. You're going to make a door at some point. And so things like that. But we're working within the code, right? Like what we're working within, sometimes there's just limitations or these little loopholes. So I need to work with council in order to be crafty too, to make sure that they can't take advantage, that they can't build something and then later convert it to something else. But that's where it's at now. And so if you have any other questions about monster homes? Yeah. Right. Yeah, so punitively, because we see the same thing, we put forth a bill last year, the year before, to be able to fine twenty-five thousand dollars if you if you don't conform with the monster homes ordinances. Unfortunately, we can't be retroactive on this particular project, but it's out there. And that's a pretty hefty fine. Like our fines up to then are like ten thousand for short-term rental, like one advertisement. But so we have a twenty-five thousand dollar fine now, should that happen. And then just going back to, you know, there's been a history. I know you spoke to the history of you see these older homes and then people coming in and then making these monster homes. There was an audit in two thousand eighteen of what DPP was doing about that because there was major concerns. We had a follow-up audit in the last year, and we got really good, I guess, like ratings, or they thought that we did follow through with a lot of things. And so since I've been at DPP, I've implemented certain review programs so that the plan reviewers, if it gets close to the FAR thresholds, like it needs to be double-checked, send it to me. We have more eyes and ears on things. Inspectors too, they're being very proactive. So I think in a twelve-month span recently, they revoke like thirteen or fifteen permits for monster homes. So this is us trying to be like, hey, it's not acceptable. And then especially with this Sierra Drive one, every step of the way, we're trying to do within, again, the confines of how we can operate under the law. We're trying to be very proactive to make sure that they can't just do anything. And like I said, they're very savvy. They're going to try to exploit the situation, but we are not. I think we've done a lot better in the last two years than prior in reviewing, enforcing against monster homes. There's certainly some that were permitted before the monster homes ordinances that we can't do anything about. I know people want us to just demolish houses. I would like that too, but it's a taking. You know, the best that we can do is make sure that they build to code. So if you believe that the code needs to be more conservative or not allow certain things, then we got to talk to council and say, hey, Tommy, consider, you know, the parking thing, or maybe you want to make the FAR even a, bring down that ratio. But so I think we've improved, but I understand when you look around, there's things out there that look bad. They might be prior to the ordinances. But at this point, DPP is fully enforcing as best as we can, as best as we should.
All right, thank you, Director Apuna. So let me open it up to questions from the board. Audrey, you have a question?
Thank you, Debbie, for being here. And I have a couple of questions on that. I think he already asked it, but so you're saying that they provided false information when they're applying the permit, but there's no penalties for that? That's the first question. And then also, yeah, I'm in the real estate industry too, so I see garages being closed and converted to living area a lot. And then also the storage area, because it's not considered living area. So is that an issue too? Because I've seen homes, it's like say they have a garage, two-car garage, and then they have the storage in the back. It's built into the ground, semi-underground. And next thing I know, there's living area in there also. So how do you handle the storage area, which is technically not living area, that's converted to living area? And then, you know, okay, so.
Yeah, so storage area, I believe, is floor area. It's floor area. It's living. I believe so. Yeah, so even when I was looking at the plans today, that extended garage, there's like a wing where they would have some storage, but that storage area, I mean, just like, I don't know, it is three feet by fifteen along the sides. That would be counted towards the floor area. Because the car can't even maneuver, yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
They're not, they had no penalties for that?
So now, now they do.
Concerning, oh, now they do.
Yeah, so now with the twenty-five thousand dollar penalty.
The twenty-five thousand.
Not specific. Okay, so there is, there's like a state law where, you know, it's like false information to a government official. That there's a state law against that, but that's, it's like a criminal statute. It's a very high standard of proof, and it involves like HPD. It's a lot of steps. But so the law that we had implemented, it's just based on, did you violate the monster homes ordinance? So it's a little bit easier for us to implement, but the one where it's like false information to a government official, it's a little bit harder to really kind of prove and to make that case and to basically enforce. But the one that we have now, we think is a lot easier for us to enforce.
Since I have your expertise here, I always wonder, like on sloping property, so there's a twenty-five-foot height limit for residential. So do you count it from the middle point or the low point or the high point of the property, you know, when it slows downward? Does it twenty-five feet in the highest point or the midpoint? Because if it's from the highest point, then of course it's going to look taller.
Well, okay, so you're talking about like where it's like.
A sloping property.
Yeah.
Like just a gradual slope.
Yeah.
Like a lot of the properties here, Wilhelmina, you know.
Right, so it's like the grade, right, is from where you start, and then you go up, whatever, I forget, and then the height, the envelope. Yeah, I mean. I think it's from the lowest point, but I would have to, I would double-check. Yeah, it doesn't seem right. Yeah, it should. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we can check on that.
Okay, so we have a question from Becky. Becky?
Hi, can you hear me? This is for the director.
I'm sorry, Becky, sorry. The name of her assistant is telling me Kelsey had her hand up first, so hold that thought. Becky, we'll get back to you. Kelsey. Kelsey, go ahead.
Okay, oh, thank you. So I just want to first of all, thank the director for everything you've done. Us neighbors have been following this site and this issue very closely. And we have to say we are fully supportive of everything you've done, and we really appreciate your integrity and thoroughness with this issue. My question is regarding their garage loophole. Does that put them over the threshold for impervious surface? Because last I checked, they were pushing the limits regarding impervious surface.
Not that I know of, but we can double-check. We'll double-check on that. I didn't talk to that branch today about that, but I can check and get back to the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, Becky?
Hi, Director, I just wanted to thank you for that thorough and detailed explanation. We've been dealing with that property for a while on this board. I also, I thought I recognized you. You had mentioned earlier the fines for the short-term rentals. And I thought I had seen a story on the news that you were on. And I think it was about the short-term rentals and then the lag time for issuing fines or whatnot. I was just wondering if you could give us an update on what that story was about. And finally, I just wanted to say, I think you're doing an awesome job, and I think this job is really hard. So kudos to you and kudos to the department. See some great strides you guys. Good weekend. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a great team and staff, so credit goes to them. But so, yeah, I think there was a story recently about the council moved to foreclose on a really bad short-term rental operator who has an illegal house, short-term rental at a house up in, I want to say Makiki. Okay, maybe not. But so he's been a really chronically bad and not listening to us as far as observing our notices as a violation, notices of order, which are the fines. And then so his fines racked up quickly based on ten thousand dollars per ad per day to, I think, close to nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. So at that point, he's still doing it. So we had our attorneys draft up a resolution to foreclose on the home. So the council voted nine to zero to move forward with that resolution. From this point, it's going to take some time because foreclosure is a process that takes a while. But they're moving in that direction. It is kind of unprecedented. But we are just trying to show force that we're not going to allow these illegal short-term rentals, and certainly not the scoff laws that continue to just ignore all of our warnings. There's a second part to that. But, okay, so I think you mentioned like the fines. We have, since there was a new law in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-two, it was ordinance twenty-two seven, that made sure no more short-term rentals in the residential districts, only in certain resort areas. And so based on that, we created a short-term rental branch. And we've issued a lot of violations. We've issued a lot of fines, and so much so that in the last three fiscal years, it was about thirty million dollars in fines that we've issued. And so the issue now is, I think there's some heartburn with some people that feel like, you know, when are you guys going to get all of that? But what I'm trying to let people know, it's a process. As much as this new law came into place, we built a team, we're issuing fines, so now we need to collect. But once those fines are issued, I don't think that they're, I mean, they're owed to the city. So however we get it, whether it's us collecting it, a lot of them are stuck in another appeals board called the Zoning Board of Appeals. But we are going to do everything we can and continue to figure out ways to capture those fines. Those fines aren't meant to be revenue for the city. They're not to generate revenue. They're to ensure that people follow the law when it comes to short-term rentals. So that's what we had on the news, and we recently put out some information about how to tell if it's an illegal short-term rental or illegal one, because we think that's important. But yeah, it's for our neighborhoods. We want to keep our neighborhoods good neighborhoods with not people partying and tourists and such.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Director. Can I just make one short comment? Is that you mentioned that the revenue from the fines goes to the general fund, to the city and county. So just my asterisk would be, like, is there a way, and maybe to, you know, the council members here, is there a way to create a closer nexus to the fines that are collected to this director's department? Since they're doing so well, I think that would be a really good use of those funds and just to help pump them up. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to have to move on, but we will take one last question. We have a question from David at Lori Kelly's.
Thank you very much. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I had a question. Let's assume that the director is accurate in her assessment, and I think she probably is, that the garage gets converted into another room. And an inspector comes in and finds that, in fact, it has been converted to another room. Would the city consider, or does the city have the power to say, take it out, not find them, and say, you have an illegal room, rip it out? Bring it back to a garage?
Yes, I think so. I think that should happen, by whatever means. We would order them to do that. And then if we didn't get compliance, we'd go for an injunction, whatever it takes.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So we will have to move on. All right, thank you. So we will have to move on. So thank you very much, Director. We really appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, so we will move on back to the agenda, uh to the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. Uh, an announcement of a planned wildfire preparedness meeting. Is Ashley online?
I'm here.
Oh, Ashley, you're here. Okay, hi, welcome.
Uh, yeah, thank you. My name's Ashley Bear. I'm here with Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. Um, and I just wanted to share about an upcoming meeting we have and give you guys a little bit of information about Hawaii wildfire, in case you're not familiar with us. So we are a nonprofit. We got started on the Big Island about twenty-five years ago. Um, and over that time, we've built up a lot of really great resources and programs to help support the people and the places of Hawaii and the broader Pacific um in resilience to wildfires. So one of those uh ways that we do that is through educational outreach and um the Firewise program. And so we have an upcoming meeting on June twenty-fifth. Make sure I'm not messing. June twenty-fifth next week, um from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM at Kamaki Middle School. Um, and we'll be sharing a lot of tips about how to prepare your home for wildfire um on an individual lot-based level and um your family as well. And then we'll also be sharing a little bit about the Firewise program, which is a program that was started by the National Fire Protection Association. And its goal is to um give communities that want to build their wildfire resilience um a framework to do that on a consistent, long-term basis. So um I hope to see some of you there. Um, and we'll be sharing a lot of really great tips. Um, I brought some flyers, if you want to share any of them, as well as specifically about the upcoming meeting and then also just about the Firewise program. Um, and I sent the flyer to the board as well, so that should be in the Google Drive for those of you online. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ashlyn. Appreciate it. Okay, so we will move on to the Hawaii bicycling league and our monthly report from Eric McCutcheon.
So take deep breath, everyone. Take a little stretch. I get to stand up, you don't, but feel free to, if you would like. Alrighty. Good evening, good evening. So we are continuing our conversation about keeping our streets safe for all users. Uh, we've been looking at bills and uh today we're gonna look at bills that make you go hmm. All right, uh before, I got three I'm gonna share with you. But first, I just want to remind you that bill nine-five-eight uh is still, or it's on the governor's desk right now. So that's the one that's sort of called the omnibus, the electric bike bill. Um, it's uh, it's got, talking about those categories or classes of electric bikes and putting stickers on bikes. Uh, what is micro mobility? Um, what are high-speed electric vehicles? And uh, that's the sticking point for the governor about signing this bill. Uh, so he hasn't signed it. It's on his desk. It is possibly gonna get vetoed or he'll let it pass without his signature. So if you care about nine-five-eight, go ahead and submit your testimony. Hmm. Hmm. Think about that one. All right. So let's take a look. Here's um, here's a bill. And with each of these three, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about it, uh both sides. Have you think, um, hmm, how would I vote on that particular bill? I'll let you know how HBL voted, and I'll let you know if it passed this year's legislature or not. So here's SB sixteen sixty-six and its companion bill HB twelve sixty. It looked like this. And sorry about all that uh text, but I wanted you to see the text of what it says. Uh, la, 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 the counties can uh close streets and repurpose them to allow pedestrians and cycles and outdoor events and other community activities. Hmm. Next slide. It might look something like this. Hmm. There's the Queen Theater. Hey, there's toys and joys. Kamaki residents should bring a smile to your face. Yes? Alrighty, so you know, you're um, you're closing the streets. Uh, people can bike in, walk in, roll in, commute in, bus in. Um, there's tents, there's music, there's laughter, there's people enjoying, it's a livable community activity. Hmm. But but, no, uh, stay, stay with that slide. Thank you. Um. It also means a lot of noise, a lot of trash. Um, barriers, volunteers that may be untrained or uncertain of what they're doing. Um, it impedes access for certain people who need a car to get in and get through there. It impedes trash collection. It can impede emergency vehicles. There's a cost involved to put these on. And often there is an inequity between neighborhoods of having the skills or the knowledge base to secure the money and the permits and things to do that. And often, rich neighborhoods get more of these activities. Hmm. Well, think about, how would you vote on this bill? I'll let you know, HBL supported it. Hmm. Did it pass? No, it did not. All right. So this bill did not pass our legislature this year, but it will come back. So think about how you would vote and maybe talk to your legislators about that. Hmm. All right. Let's get a little more controversial. Next slide. Again, a lot of kind of boring text there. Go ahead and take a look at that. La, 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 okay, we wanna reduce uh vehicle emissions. Yeah, 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 reduce. Uh, oh, we want to reduce single occupancy vehicle use. It's probably most of us, single driver in a single car, right? By making some positions and uh there's some funds to do stuff. Hmm. So maybe no surprise, single driver in a single vehicle is a massive, massive environmental, physical, livable community challenge. Uh, it is very much holding the state back from hopefully reaching its zero-carbon usage. So this is an idea. Um, but again, we need to look at both sides. Um, so, next slide. What does this mean? Oh. Subsidized, subsidized or free holo car. Yeah. Free bus rides, free or subsidized rail rides, skyline. Maybe you can wait to start working it for BIKI. Hmm. But wait a second, that costs a lot of money. Giving those kinds of subsidies takes money away from other state activities. Right? Um, it kind of penalizes people who need cars. And there's a lot of us who need cars. So it's kind of punitive. Um, and wow, free is such a great word. But there's a lot of research that says even if you give a free ride, people aren't gonna take it. Free BIKI, free skyline. No thanks, I'm gonna stick to my car. Hmm. How would you vote on this bill to reduce single use by subsidizing state that is public, but maybe even someday private alternative transportation? Well, HBL supported this bill and it did not pass. Did not pass. But again, think about it. Think about it. Be aware of the issues. See what happens next year. Let's get even more controversial, shall we? All right, so there's some of that text. Hmm. Pedestrians to cross contrary to state code. Whoa. In other words, next slide. Decriminalizing jaywalking. Hmm. 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 So the idea here is that crossing the road can be, can be, can be dangerous and challenging. So uh as I do every month, I'm gonna show this, again, sort of low-tech here. But these are the fatalities, are fatalities here in the state of, no, wait. Uh, sorry, is this? Uh, yes, for the state of Hawaii, where up to sixty-four, sixty-four fatalities of those sixty-four, twenty-one have been pedestrians. And you know that uh police just reported one non-fatality here in Kamaki, but at least we're still, I think, Kamaki safe. Um, last year at this time was forty-three with fifteen pedestrians. So again, it's tricky to be a pedestrian, even when we've got marked crossings, people are dying. Believe it or not, more people are dying every year on the street. And we've been increasing pedestrian law every year. Maybe it doesn't work. Well, some states have tried that out. Virginia, California, New York, uh Arizona have decriminalized jaywalking. They are allowing people to cross the street without fear of being stopped by law enforcement. Hmm. And some of the research, research is showing there is no increase in pedestrian fatalities. So what's going on? These laws aren't making you safe. You take them away, they aren't making any difference. Well, I think most groups can agree that it's not just the crosswalks, right? It's the whole infrastructure of cars, bikes, people rolling, people walking, um lights, colors, grades, road diets. All of these things that uh our legislatures are very much behind trying to make the streets safer. Um, so in the meantime, as all this infrastructure change is going on, some things to think about, decriminalizing jaywalking. Hmm. How would you vote if you were a legislator? HBL supported this law. And maybe if you're seeing the trend, you might figure out it did not pass here in Hawaii. But it will be back again. Think about it as uh for next legislative session. And hopefully you had something to go hmm about tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it. All right, so we're gonna move on to a presentation from HNL Connect uh on the DTS Transportation Demand Management Program. Uh, is Becca online? Oh, Becca's here. Hi, Becca.
I'm Becca Steinhour. I am a project manager with Honolulu High Tech and.
Hi, Becca, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you get a little closer to the microphone? Maybe we can adjust it somehow. Yeah, thanks.
Um, and I'm helping the Department of Transportation Services with their um transportation demand management program. Um, and I have Max Calhammer here, and he's gonna do a little bit of an introduction before we get into it.
Thank you, Becca. Good to see everybody here. Uh, it's great to be at the Kamaki Neighborhood Board. Thank you, sir. Um, transportation demand management is something that the city planned for in twenty-twenty-three. Passed it. Um, and the Oahu MPO was the sponsor of the project, both financially and, you know, representationally from the state and the federal government. Um, which gave us um an authorization to implement a, a, a suite of tailored strategies for Honolulu and the county um to uh encourage people not giving up their cars, but to use their cars less, to use the transportation network that is planned and, and existing in a smarter way. Smart transportation is what we're after. And tonight, we're gonna focus a little bit on parking. But Becca is gonna walk you through what we're doing to implement the twenty-twenty-three Transportation Demand Management Plan. And I'm Max Calhammer. I'm the program manager with the city and county. I'm the branch chief in the Business Development and Services Branch of the Transportation and Performance and Development Division of the Department of Transportation Services. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Um, so I wanted to start with our current initiatives and projects that we have going on. Um, we are forming a steering committee that we are going to use to help guide the program that will also help promote education about the TDM program. Um, and then also hopefully foster engagement and adoption within the local organizations and the community. Um, we are also about to launch our first restricted parking zone program in Kali Valley. Um, and each year we'll add a new zone uh in different neighborhoods depending on different factors and with a study. Um, and this program aims to improve parking management for residents and businesses in that area. Um, we are also in the last steps of finding our um vendor for the mobile and web TDM application that will support multiple initiatives that we have within this program, such as van pool, um rip uh trip routing, things like that. Um, we also have our marketing initiative that includes um social media posts every week. And we're trying to highlight different things with skyline, uh different bus routes, just encouraging people to see the different ways that they can use or utilize the transportation options available. Um, and then along with the ongoing marketing, we have an annual marketing campaign that we will um begin in August that will um line up with the phase two of Skyline when that opens in September. And we also have a travel challenge that will happen towards the end of the year that will also line up with that launch. Um, and then I wanted to review what our concept is for that marketing campaign. Um, we, we wanted people to see that taking the bus or skyline or the different options that are available to them, it's not as complicated, complicated as they think, or it's not as scary as they think. Um, they just have to step inside the door of a van pool, the bus or skyline, and they can be brought to their destination. Um, we also want to um have, allow people to see the drawbacks of taking single occupancy vehicle trips, um such as sitting in traffic, you're, can't do much, you just have to sit there and wait, or um circling the block, looking for traffic or looking for a parking spot. Um, we just want to eliminate those barriers so people can see how transportation, like the bus or skyline, can improve their life. Um, but we also understand that asking people to totally eliminate driving from their life is a far reach. Um, so we just want people to look at the different ways that they can consider driving less. How can they incorporate transportation in their everyday life? And then I just wanted to show an example. Our tagline's gonna be, open the door to XYZ. Um, we have some fun elevator apps that we want to do that opens the bus door and shows people in different scenarios. So here we have somebody having a good day at the beach. Um, but we'll also have things with Skyline and Van. Um, additional initiatives that we have planned, starting in um fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, uh, we are working on the city employee TDM program. That includes uh education on the transportation benefits that are available to them, as well as an annual travel, travel survey. Um, in July, our fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, the city holo badge program is going to launch, which makes um a free transit pass available to all city employees that have a city badge. Um, we're also doing ongoing education for public officials. Um, later this year, we'll also be launching, relaunching the Vanpool subsidies program. Um, along with, we're working with um the state on carpool matching and using their Hawaii Ride Share website to help coordinate that. Um, citywide multimodal efforts. And then we also are working on the on-street and off-street parking policy reforms. Um, that will be uh brought back up in July and then ongoing program monitoring. Um, and then Max is gonna go through the slide first real quick. Max is gonna go through the slide first real quick.
So we wanted to highlight some parking facts and realities for the Kamaki neighborhood, and specifically in connection with public parking. So off-street, we have Kamaki Municipal Number One, which is between Eleventh and Twelfth Avenue, and Wailei and Harding. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's the one that's managed via concession and automated gate arms. It's got a hundred and six stalls, and it allows for credit card payments. It's got a pretty predictable cycle on weekdays and weekends. Kamaki Municipal Number Two is a metered off-street lot, and it's actually right here on the other side of Cocoahead Avenue. It's a hundred and ten stalls with meters. There's two, like, just exceptional meters in the Koah Pancake House parking lot. But the other, all the rest are in the Municipal Number Two boundary area. And that, too, is pretty well-used and pretty high revenue. The on-street parking, there's about a hundred metered parallel parking spaces in Kamaki, sixty of which are on Wailei Avenue. And it's one-hour parking with the option to extend remotely with an app. I don't know how many of you have the Park Smarter app. Did you know about the Park Smarter app? Well, that's something that I use whenever I do drive into work for whatever reason. And I find it incredibly convenient to be able to extend my parking remotely because I never know exactly how long I'm going to be in any one place. So I think you'll find it fun if you are a driver and you park on-street or in metered spots. So as far as the demand is concerned for parking in Kamaki, I would say, you know, Wailei is a classic main street, and it's got parallel parking that also serves, but it also serves as an arterial roadway with through traffic to Waikai and to the other end to downtown Waikiki. There's high demand during the peak dining and shopping hours, just like the off-street facilities. We have about forty thousand-plus meter transactions per month from the two hundred meters between the off-street and the off-street, which is pretty high. It's like the third-highest Neighborhood Board district. And I must say, the paid compliance rate in Kamaki is one of the highest. But guess what it is? Anyone want to take a guess? It's, I'm sorry, what is it? It's actually north of fifty percent. But there are some neighborhoods that are in that twenty to thirty percent range. So yeah, think about all the lost revenue that the city can recover if we had, you know, more resources and staffing for enforcement and things like that. So we're working on all of that. And I'm just gonna turn it back over to Becca. But we just thought that you might find that information interesting, even though you're probably very familiar with your own parking asset.
Thanks, Max. So the next thing we wanted to do is go through a parking exercise with you guys. And it's hands-on, so we'll need at least four people to help us with that. I don't know if you guys would want to do that for us, or if we want to take volunteers. I don't know the best way to do that for organization. Okay, okay. Anybody else? Okay. And then, yeah, we need at least four. We've got our four. Okay. Maybe over there, so they don't have to clear their stuff.
So Becca, you're gonna quickly read the rules. And what we want to convey- So Becca's gonna read the rules, and it's gonna be very simple. You'll catch on very quick. But the message we want to convey is what people do in their typical behavior to find parking, and why these daily cycles are the way they are. It's a very illustrative game in that sense. It teaches a very simple lesson, but one that doesn't take very long, but it drives home a powerful point that people, well, I'm not gonna spoil the surprise. Go ahead, Becca.
Yeah, so we have our teams over here. And then, Max, we have those little cards with the times and the shoppers and things like that. So looking at the board, we have structured parking, which is the two gold central blocks that you see, and that costs ten dollars per hour. And then we have our open-air parking, which is the purple spaces on the outside of the board, and that parking costs five dollars per hour. But after you park here, you have to walk five to seven minutes to reach your destination in the central blocks, those gold blocks. And then parking on the street curb is free for this round. And then the parking in the no-parking zones can result in a fine of a hundred dollars. But enforcement is light in this round. So you can take a chance if you want to and see if you get fined. So what we need to do is we need to divvy up those cards that are in there, Max. Yeah.
And not all the same amount. Same amount, but not all the same.
Yeah, mixed up. Yeah. So these are our entry cards. Seventy.
Five and four is like seventeen and a half.
Yeah, so somebody will get an extra card.
Thank you.
So we will play this game twice. The first one will have light enforcement, and the second one will have enforcement. So encourage it's less risky behavior and hopefully turnover in the parking. Okay, so you guys have your entry cards now, and I am the moderator. So I'll be flipping cards and prompting you to place those cards on the board based on what I have in my hand.
All right, Eric can go first, or everybody goes.
Everybody at the same time. So you'll have cards that say, like, Cafe Owner, eight AM.
Yeah, lay them all out on the table.
Yeah, and then the other side has an exit time, or it'll either be all-day parking or an exit time. So when you place it on the board, the exit time needs to be facing up. And once we organize those, I'll start prompting. Okay. Are we all organized? Awesome. Okay, so the first card we have is for cafe owners coming in at eight AM, and there should be six total.
So remember the relative cost of each parking spot.
And I believe they should be there all day. So I want to think about that, how much they're paying to park there all day.
The purple one was how much?
Purple one is five dollars per hour. The free one are all the gray.
The gray.
Yeah. Yep, place it anywhere you want. How you would park. And then are we making sure that the exit time is face up? Perfect. Awesome. Okay, next card. We're bringing in the breakfast eaters at eight-thirty AM. There should be six.
The early breakfast crowd. So this is just like Kamaki Municipal Number Two. The gray.
Gray is free, purple is five, and gold is ten.
Ten.
Per hour.
Per hour.
Now, the workers are coming in for the day at nine AM. There should be five coming in. Coming in right on time. Okay.
Okay.
Now we have the later breakfast group coming in at nine AM, and there should be five coming in.
Ah-ha, late crowd. They might stay until-
Runching.
Runch.
Totally, totally fine. Yeah, that's what we expect to happen.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Free is free.
Okay, so we have our first crowd exiting at nine-thirty. So there should be three cars leaving at nine-thirty.
Look for your exits, okay?
Okay, we've got the late people coming in for work. We have the office staff coming in at nine-thirty, and there should be five.
Office at nine-thirty.
Has there been any competition for parking yet?
No.
We also have our next round of late eaters for breakfast at nine-thirty. There should be six coming in. We need all of them.
Right.
Okay, we have our next group exiting at ten AM. There should be-
All the ten AM exits. We can just put them in a pile somewhere. There's another ten AM. Right? Ten AM, okay? Maybe I can help with the exits. Okay.
Okay, super late staff, office staff is coming in at ten AM, and there's five coming in late. Okay, our next group is exiting at ten-thirty, and there should be a big crowd of five cars leaving.
Ten-thirty, okay. Got them. Okay, we got them.
Okay, our shop owners are coming in at ten-thirty. There should be two coming in for setup.
Shop owners, shop owners.
Okay, now we have the shoppers coming in at ten-thirty. They saw those doors open. They're coming in. There should be five. Has anybody taken a chance on the no-parking yet? Not yet? Okay, we have our next group exiting at eleven. There should be five cars exiting.
Right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have our next round of shop owners coming in at eleven. There should be two more.
Two more shop owners, okay.
We have the corresponding shoppers coming in for eleven, right before lunch. There should be five. Okay, and- Okay, we have the lunch crowd leaving at eleven-thirty. There should be three cars leaving.
Leaving at eleven-thirty. There we go. Thank you.
Now we have our lunch shoppers coming in at eleven-thirty. There should be six.
Okay. All right, it's getting tight.
See some risk-taking over there. Okay, we have the lunch crowd leaving. They don't want to pay for lunch, so twelve o'clock exit with three cars.
Okay, twelve o'clock exits. There should be three. All right.
We're getting towards the end of the day.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have people who want to eat out, lunch meetings at twelve. Six cars are coming in. Twelve. Okay, now we have our twelve-thirty exit.
Twelve-thirty exit. Twelve-thirty, twelve-thirty. Okay.
Okay, now we have our after-lunch shoppers going at twelve-thirty, or coming in at twelve-thirty. There should be just two. And then they're gonna do a little bit of shopping at twelve-thirty, or eating at twelve-thirty. There's lunch meetings, so four of them are gonna come in for lunch meetings at twelve-thirty.
Lunch is at twelve-thirty. Yep. There's still five dollars available. Five an hour.
Yeah. Okay, so we're at the end. What are some key takeaways, or what do you guys see happening on the board? Or what happened while you're playing the game? Did you see any, anything interesting? They're just sitting in the free parking? Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. And there's a lot of all-day people sitting in that free parking.
Right.
Yeah, just some observations, which I think you guys-
So is there a parking surplus? There is.
So as you pointed out, we can see that the street parking is fully occupied with most spaces taken by the long-term parkers. And then the short-term parking, which is the green parking, is primarily available, like mostly open. And then the structured parking, which is the gold parking in the middle, nobody's really using it at all. And then I can't tell, but I think you have some legally parked vehicles on there. Yeah, so you have some people who are risking it because they know that enforcement is light. So if you're okay with it, we'd like to play one more round, but it'll have enforcement this time. So taking the risk of being in the no-parking zone could- Okay, yeah.
We can, thank you, yeah, thank you very much for participating. And so the point of the next round would be that with enforcement, Becca, there would be even stricter compliance, right? But actually, no one, everyone was pretty good in this round. They didn't break any rules, so.
Yeah, and it'll prompt people to move quicker. Like, the all-day parking is not gonna risk being in the free parking. There, I think in the second round, it's five or ten dollars for that parking now, or it's twenty dollars for that parking in the next round. So, and a bigger fine. The fine is two hundred dollars, and the enforcement- So and a bigger fine, the fine is two hundred dollars and the enforcement is more frequent. So they're gonna not risk it, they're gonna pay and they're gonna park on the outside, like in the purple or in the gold, and then that opens up the outside parking, the curb parking for people who are only there for twenty minutes to an hour. And that way they can do their shopping and then they're out. Or they can, it helps businesses and residents is the primary reasoning behind it, so.
Thank you all. Thanks very much.
Okay, well, thank you for listening to our presentation about transportation demand management and for your patience if we did not play the game and for those who did play the game. I hope it was a fun exercise and we intend on going to other games to try to drive this home. You're the first people who actually played, so this is kind of a test for us to like, how do we make this better? How do we get more organized and? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a. Becky, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um. I lived in Japan for a couple of years and one of the things I sort of appreciated about it were these vertical parking structures and you would it would put your car into like a conveyor belt and bring it up to a little cubby and then it would automatically park your car and then you would press your code and the car would come down the this vertical conveyor belt and then down in this like floor that turns around. It's, it was almost like Price is Right and I just got such a kick out of it. But it seemed like it was a really smart use of space, um, using the vertical space. And I'm just wondering if that's something maybe could happen in Kamaki? I don't know if there's any zoning restrictions or anything about that. I know it works well with the tiny cars like the K cars in Japan, but just wondering what you guys think about that.
It would be great if Debbie were still here to answer some of the, the zoning implications for that. But yeah, when space is at a premium, that kind of um technology is, is definitely advantageous. I think in general, we, we find ourselves to have too much parking for this island that's a very dense and where real estate and, and available land is, is so valuable. So it's a very well-received um comment. Thank you very much.
Alright, okay, so we're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Becca, Max, appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation. Okay, so we, uh, we're about eight oh four. We have the room to eight thirty. Uh, we are gonna move on to the elected officials' reports. Uh, first off, Brian, the mayor's representative.
Thanks, everybody, for letting me come here. We did not have a, a meeting today. Usually we have cabinet Wednesday right before this meeting. Uh, this month that didn't happen, but we do have some highlights. Uh, I see some of these uh mayor's highlights back here. I encourage you to grab them. Um, just got a couple of announcements. We had, we had forty-six years of service in the lifeguard service, so um Lieutenant Bill Ingram has been around for forty-six years, a lifeguard for forty-six years. I mean, I sit on my, I sit every, all day, you know, I can't imagine getting up and, and surfing for that long, but they had his retirement. It was kind of a neat thing that the mayor attended. Um, the mayor also hosted his annual Memorial Day ceremony. It's the seventy-fourth time they've done this. They had a traditional honors wreath presentation, rifle salute, flyover by F-22s, and the Royal Hawaiian Band played. Um, and also the city's annual soa lay for Memorial Day was completed. Um, they were able to place a fresh lay on every grave in uh, in the mortuary. That's thirty-eight thousand in total, thanks to the support of the community and the scouts. We did have seventeen new vehicles were delivered to EMS, uh, which is a lot. Um, their fleet was getting really old and now um for the first time ever, uh, I think all of their ambulances and, and crew uh crews are driving around in a vehicle that is uh two years old or less. So uh, we expect a lot of really good service out of that group. Um, the mayor did also commemorate Police Week and kicked that off on May twelfth. Uh, that's to honor all of the um, the police officers that have fallen in the line of duty in Honolulu. And uh, just a couple more, uh, we wrapped up our annual joint food bank food drive successfully. And uh, we had another ceremony uh just recently for OTS. We had, we had seven members of OTS that had served driven buses and been one, one dispatcher for fifty years, fifty years of service. So we have the names of them here. I won't name them all. They're, they're available on the website. But they all started in nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-five, which to me is incredible. I've never done anything in my life for fifty years solid, so. That's the uh, that's the wrap-up for me. I'll take any questions. I, I did have a question concerning the uh, the ENV rates. Um, I did mention that uh Bill sixty did pass and so the ENV rates will be going up. The rates will be increasing. Um, there is also going to be a separation of the bill in the near future between the Board of Water Supply and ENV. So uh, what is one contiguous bill will then be two in the near future and there'll be some outreach along those lines. Her specific question concerned the base rate charge. Um, and she's got an Ohano unit and, and it does look a little egregious, so I will elevate that for her. And then we also have a follow-up for uh the bus discussion. Um, Route Nine being um, you know, taken out of here and rerouted. Uh, we had a joint committee meeting maybe three months ago and there's been no follow-up, so I'll try to do that for you guys, too. Um, anybody have any questions?
Okay, any questions for the mayor's representative?
Hi, Brian. Thank, this is Audrey Abbe. Thank you for being here. And um, I'm glad you mentioned about our joint uh transportation meeting was on March fourth. And uh, we've been trying to do a follow-up meeting with them, so this comprises uh Diamond Head, Kapo Hulu, St. Louis, Palolo, and Kamaki who are all in favor of a portion of Bus Route Nine to come back and would help with the parking situation, too, because people can't get the buses into Kamaki Town now for, for library and banks and restaurants. So it's really, uh, I've been purposely going into Kamaki Town almost every day just to kind of get a feeling of just my personal, but um, if, if we can ask for your assistance, then I really appreciate it.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that happen.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you for being at the meeting, too. You were there on March fourth. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it was good.
Quick question. When parking lot number two is being redone, repaved, and et cetera, there was gonna be an EV station installed there? We were told early on. It never came to be?
I have no idea about that, but I will find out. Parking lot two, where, where are we talking about again?
That's the metered parking lot behind like Jose's.
Okay, alright, and there was supposed to be an EV charging station? Alright, I'll check into that. We have EV charging stations in uh, in the downtown parking by HMB and they've all been turned off, so.
Doesn't help us in Kamaki.
Yeah, well, I mean, I.
Thank you.
We don't even have them either, so I'll, I'll check into it. Thanks.
Alright, thanks very much, Brian. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down. I'm sorry, we have a question? Who, who is? Oh, Lori, question?
Yes, thank you, uh, Lori Amadas, and also envision Kamaki. Okay, so anyway, uh, I'd like to confirm that Sixteenth and Wai-Li street lights, traffic lights have been changed, right? To a different uh schedule. I mean, it's like.
I trust you. Sure, okay.
I want to hear it from you that it did change, cuz it's like, I wonder if I'm just, you know, imagining it, so. But anyway, it seems to be working better. Like, it makes people wait longer to go, and I think that's a good thing, you know, traffic calming kind of thing.
Okay, Lori, um, we just have, we have an update from DTS and they say that the no changes were made to the traffic signal located at Wai-Li at Sixteenth. Uh, there's an existing left turn signal in the intersection for vehicles traveling along Wai-Li Avenue in both directions. Uh, but there's been no change that, that they've acknowledged.
Oh, boo, okay. Alright, so it was my imagination. Okay, so.
But it is working better, Lori, so.
Yeah. In Lori's world, um, how many ambulances do we have nowadays? Cuz I remember for the longest time, we only had twenty-one. How many do we have now?
I, I want to say we have thirty-six now. And uh, yeah, and, and some of them were in a state of being repaired. What happens when uh, when they get too old, they, they refurbish them and they generally keep the chassis and the engine and they put a new box on the back of them, but these are, are brand-new ones, so um, I expect them to be in service for a good five years yet. So, yeah, they're, they also got two new vehicles that are for uh emergency response after the um incident uh, Winward Side with the uh fireworks and the mass casualties that they had, they've increased uh to two vehicles that can take multiple um people to the hospital, so it should help.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright, okay, thanks, Lori. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we will move on to City Council Chair Tommy Waters' office.
Hey, aloha.
There's Adam, yeah. Hi, Adam.
Great, thank you. Aloha, Chair Kang, uh Vice Chair, hold and members of the board, Adam Do from Council Chair Tommy Waters' office. Um, I am very thankful that um Director Apuna made the time to meet with the board. Um, as you can imagine, I all respect to um Director McKee. I think uh DPP's uh director uh is one of the most challenging jobs in, in the city, so. We continue to look forward to collaborate and work with her. Chair Waters has taken a real firm stand against monster homes. Has introduced, um, and the council has passed multiple bills in that closing loopholes and strengthening the building code and enforcement. Chair Waters and I sat together um through the Building Portable Appeals hearing for thirty-six fifteen. Um, and we were onsite again yesterday um to see the impacts firsthand. Now, there's more work to be done and we'll work with Director and DPP to close um this garage loophole. Oh, quickly, I did want to talk about Bill forty-six twenty-five, which was uh introduced by Chair Waters and council member. Which um, it strengthens HPD's communication with the public. The bill would require HPD to provide qualified local media with access to HPD dispatch radio communications so they can better inform uh the police about dangerous situations. Bill forty-six will next be heard um in the Public Safety Committee at the, and at the end of the month. Um, I do see uh Representative Tina Grandinetti at the meeting. So I'll let her talk about our upcoming joint uh July town hall. And lastly, I did want to thank the outgoing uh neighborhood board members, Franklin, Travis, Judy Anne, Woody, Joyce. Um, Franklin, I'll still see you hopefully on our walk to work, uh, but for the rest of you, I hope you uh stay engaged uh with the community. And uh, I look forward to uh working with the incoming members. With that, I'm happy to take uh any questions or try to answer them myself.
Alright, thank you very much, Adam. Any uh questions for Chair Waters' office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Adam. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Alright, so we will move on to uh Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Amanda on?
Aloha, um, this is Amanda. I'm on.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi, um, sorry, so close up. Um. First of all, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, uh members and the members of the public. Not sure if you were able to take a look at the news release page for the governor. Um, it is on governor.hawaii.gov. We spoke about, or last month, if I can remember correctly, there is a um lively conversation about um dogs on leash and, and parks. And so on June eighteenth, uh, there was a news release from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Um, it's pretty timely. The, it's for the beach leash laws for protection of monk seal pups. There was an incident on the North Shore um and on some other shorelines um that have impacted either the monk seal or their pup. So dog walkers are urged to always keep dogs leashed and avoid areas where monk seals are known to rest or nurse their pups. Always follow the posted signs and guidance from marine wildlife officials. And our uh brothers and sisters over at City and County of Honolulu, they have a list of on and off-leash dog parks um around Oahu, so please um take a look at that important news release. There was also a very interesting news release um about the protection of uh child talent. So um, I, I do believe that um moving forward in, in Hawaii, if a child is an actress or entertainer, the um, their employer must put aside about fifteen percent in a trust fund. And um Hawaii's not the first state to implement this, but I, it's um, you know, the actress from Lilo and Stitch. She was there at the uh governor's ceremonial room. I think this is um pretty monumental. Um, and I encourage you to take a look at that news release. And I will also put the newsletter in the chat. There's interesting um tidbits about the the coordination of palm tree treatment for the um the beetle. So that's mostly on North Shore, but I remember when um in Kamaki, I do remember hearing about some of that, too, so um I will put the news release link in the chat as I will put the newsletter and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Thanks very much, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda Stevens, the governor's representative? Alright, seeing none. Thanks, thanks very much, Amanda. Thanks for the update.
Sorry, and that was a coconut rhinoceros beetle. Forgot about the name. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, so we will move on to uh State Senator Stanley Chang's office. We have a representative from Senator Chang's office. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to State Senator Lesihara, who I see online. Senator?
Good evening. Uh, I know you're running late, but uh I can just mention that uh the governor had until next week Tuesday to submit a list of all the bills he may veto. Uh, he's the first governor that I recall that um issued a list early so that the legislature has uh two additional weeks to review it. So I, I do want to acknowledge that and, and that's a good government practice. Uh, I haven't heard of any bills that that members at the legislature, I haven't heard any movement toward uh having an override session um for any bill that got vetoed. Uh, typically, um, uh, if it's a, you know, we were, we could, we would go in. Rarely ever go into veto session, but if we did, we would just convene without a call. Uh, if a majority of members in the House and Senate showed up on July ninth uh in the chambers, um, it's convened. Um, we can self-convene. We do not have to have the governor or the, or anyone call us in. And, and, but you need to have two-thirds uh vote in both bodies to override. Uh, and uh, so that's, that's what we're waiting on now. We're anticipating a special session later in the year. Uh, there is one thing that I, I, if, if there was a bill, let's say the, the get one, one, there was a bill that was mentioned in another neighborhood board where there may be a, 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 a technical error. And there is a way, if the House, if the legislature and the governor agreed uh on fixing a technical error, probably not a major policy issue, but a, a technical error. Sometimes there's a typo that will, you know, it's a decimal play, decimal is in the wrong place or the wrong word is used. Then it nullifies the whole bill, so there is a way where the governor can uh send back a veto message saying that uh there was an error found and um, and a, and, and the bill is important enough to uh, uh correct it in one vote. Uh, then that could happen. It's never happened. I've never seen that in my career. But that is um, uh, that is something that have been thought about in the past, so, so uh that's just an, another uh tidbit. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Alright, thank you, Senator. Any questions for Senator Lesihara? Alright, seeing none. Thank you very much, Senator. Thanks for joining us. Alright. So we will move on to uh State Representative Tina Grandinetti. So we will move on to State Representative Tina Grandinetti.
Hello, um, I think my office manager Emily was here last week to give kind of our legislative session recap. But I have a few updates. I missed HBL's presentation, but I caught a little bit of it online. And I'm not sure if you went over the e-bike regulation bill. Yeah, it's on the governor's veto list. We were really excited about that bill and there are concerns that it doesn't, because it doesn't clearly exclude EVs from the bill language around e-bikes and e-scooters. It could impact EVs. Chair Keela of the Transportation Committee, he is working with the AG's office and the governor's office to really make clear that vehicle classifications operate in a different statute than where this bill operates. And so we're hoping we can get it off the veto list. But if you are really passionate about the bill and I, you know, from door knocking that a lot of people have concerns about e-bikes. Might be a good time to express your support. I think you can do it on the gov's website. But since we had such a transportation heavy neighborhood board today, I thought that would be relevant to share. My personal update, I will no longer be Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee because of some changes in our committee chair assignments. I'm actually going to be Vice Chair of the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. I'm really excited about it. It's a big committee, covers a very wide range of issues that, and I will be coming off as a member of the Finance Committee and instead moving to Vice Chair of CPC. I think it'll give me a chance to dig really deeply into issues like health insurance, condo insurance. You know, my passion, passion area is tenant protections and landlord tenant code. So I'm really excited about that. Our newsletter is on its way. We took a little while, but they are in the mail. So if you live in District Twenty, you'll be getting them in the next few days. And I also hope to get back on the doors. So if you live Makai of the freeway, I hope to be bothering you sometime in the next six months before we get going again for the twenty twenty six session. And like Adam mentioned, Council Member Waters and I are hosting a joint town hall at Lejo Lejo Elementary School on July twenty third, beginning at six thirty. I know you guys see us pretty frequently, but especially if you have friends and neighbors who don't get out to the neighborhood boards, but want to talk story face to face, please tell them about it and it'll, the details will be on the mailer as well. And free for questions.
All right. Thank you. Question, Audrey?
Yeah, just quickly. The CPP Committee, so that's Jared Keohu Kalole and then is oh, you're the House. Yeah, right. Well, so you do work together though? Okay, okay. Just thank, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for Representative Grandinetti? All right. Well, thank you. Thanks very much for the updates. Okay, so we will move on to State Representative Jackson Sayama, Representative Sayama.
Hello, Chair, members of the board, members of the public. I think I don't want to repeat anything that Senator Hara or Representative Grandinetti had already mentioned. So again, just check out that veto list. There are definitely some interesting items on that list that, you know, I think there should be some reconsideration on, but if not, then we always have the next legislative session to fix these issues and to try it again. So right, I don't think that even if it does get vetoed, we should lose hope. We shall always continue that movement forward. For myself, I have been meeting with different stakeholders and relating to labor as I'm the current Labor Chair of the House. Meeting with unions regarding UTF issues as well as different stakeholders on paid family leave. As it continues to be one of the top policy interests amongst private and public employees in the state. Also, something I'm be working on is D herd with their vacancy rates. There continues to be some frustration with the bottleneck of Department of Human Resources with regards to how quickly or how slowly they process applications for potential employees to the state. To fill again, I think what we're averaging is about twenty eight percent vacancy rates across the state. So that's in all industries too, but especially difficult for the state. Other things that we'll be working on in the district again, like Tina was saying, I'll be going door to door as well. They're probably going to be continued to have cleanups in Melma Park. I'm sure I'll be working with Envision Kimaki on that one. As well as maybe if you like to request park cleanups like in Monolani Circle, be happy to lend a hand there as well. But I think from Kimaki, all I got this past month was concerns about feral chickens and nuisances regarding that. So if you do have questions about how to deal with those, of course, feel free to reach out to my office. You know, I'm happy to come, do a little site visit like I'm doing, I think, next week to a resident in Kimaki. But yes, please reach out to my office, either email or phone or at these neighborhood board meetings. All available for questions now.
Hey, thank you, Representative Sayama. Any questions for Representative Sayama? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Representative. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. So we will move on to Congressman Ed Case's office. Is Mallory online?
Yep, I'm here.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mallory. I work for Congressman Case as a staff assistant in the DC office. Thanks for your time tonight. Just wanted to provide some quick updates. I've gone ahead and posted the congressman's quarter two neighborhood board report in the chat. As always, the congressman's website is the best place to find latest information, any assistance requests. You can also find the neighborhood board report under the quote newsroom tab. I also wanted to share that the congressman's most recent e-newsletter actually went out today. It provides an update on the first one hundred fifty days of the Trump administration, where the federal government is and an update on our appropriations bills that we've recently been working through. If anyone has any questions or comments, happy to take that back to the office. But that's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Mallory. Any questions for Congressman Ed Case's office? All right, seeing none. Thanks very much, Mallory. Thanks for joining us. All right. So we will move on to announcements, a quick announcement. The Kimaki Library's sixtieth anniversary celebration is this Sunday, June twenty second at ten thirty AM to four o'clock PM. There is a ceremony at one o'clock PM. A lot of activities planned by the library. Please RSVP to the library by calling them if you'd like to attend. The next announcement is this is the last meeting of the term of this board. I'd like to thank all the members here and online for serving on the board. I really appreciate everyone coming out. The NCO for its support of the board. Thank you very much. And of course, all of our first responders, elected officials and others who attend our boards and, and give the updates every month. We really appreciate it. So thank you. We do look forward to welcoming new members to our board. And I'd like to send out a special thank you and mahalo to the members of our board who decide not to stand for reelection. That's Franklin, Joyce, Judy Anne, Travis and Woody and best wishes to you all in your future endeavors. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Any other announcements from the board? Okay. Board business, we have approval of the May twenty first, two thousand twenty five written summary of video records. I have a motion to approve those minutes. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved, second, all right.
At four, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. The written summary of video record is approved. Reports, a report of traffic and transportation committee.
Yes, just quickly now, we are making some headway with the Transportation Joint Committee with Diamond Head and Palolo to meet with DTS. And Juanita was able to speak to Eileen Mark. She's the head of the Transportation Mobility Division there and in charge of bus service. So they've been very busy, but they will be getting back to us. And I'm very thankful Brian McKee is here. And hopefully we can assist us in arranging this follow up meeting. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much to the committee for its work on this. Okay. Members attendance at any other meetings? Have any members attended any other meetings to report on? All right, seeing none. Okay, so the next meeting of this board is Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM, right here at the Kimaki Library meeting room and remotely via WebEx. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.
Tonight, everybody.